Are we recording? We can?
Yep, we're all set.
Okay, I didn't notice that. Great, about a couple of minutes past six and calling the Brattleboro Planning Commission meeting to order. We have four commissioners here at the meeting. Let's review the minutes of last May. Sorry. Let's review, let's approve the minutes of May 5th. Is there a motion to do so?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of May 5th.
Thank you.
In a second.
Second.
Thank you, Bonnie.
Any comments, questions, edits? No? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. That's the three on Zoom and myself, all four of us, okay. Are there any announcements? Staff?
Um, yes. Sorry, just wanted to check and see if I had announced it and I did. On next Tuesday night at 6 o'clock in the Select Board Meeting Room, there is going to be a kind of public meeting on the Western Avenue intersections. It's not something that the Planning Commission's been involved with, but we're looking at the Guilford Street/Western Avenue intersection like to go towards Red Silver Memorial Park and then also at the Williams Street intersections, which Vermont Country Deli sits in between them. So we've had a consultant doing some work on that. I think I had mentioned that there was going to be able to be feedback on preliminary concepts that may be a little bit overstating. They're going to be looking at use of the right-of-way and different configurations of, you know, bike lanes, parking, that kind of thing. And then also getting a sense of the lights of William Street, sorry. So anyway, if it's of interest to you, there is a meeting here. We also will be recording it and it'll be, we're going to do a hybrid meeting. So might be something you're interested in checking out from a transportation perspective or if you live near there.
Are they looking for like feedback to steer which option gets more prominence?
Yeah.
Which one the community seems to prefer?
Yeah, or knowing that there's kind of limited space there, what are we wanting to prioritize? Is it, obviously it's making the intersection more safe.
Yeah.
There's a lot of parking needs there. Granted, it's private parking needs.
Okay. What's the zoning district there? Not that maybe has problems.
It is the ORN 54.
I'll just make a quick note that I keep skipping a month or two with this downtown bike parking project. It's probably testing everyone's memory when it comes up again after two or three months. But I'm going to try to get some, you know, talk with staff too in the interim and for the probably July meeting have a, try to have some recommendations, proposals based off the data and the current conditions for y'all to review and give feedback on. So aiming for next meeting, although next meeting is also our organizational meeting, but that usually takes up a third, maybe a whole half of the meeting if we have something that seems organizational related. But see, it's just election of officers and maybe, well typically it's supposed to be like a review of the town plan, right? But we're doing that kind of every month. Last year we did like a review of the implementation matrix and so it can just be the elections. Yeah. So if any of you are feeling like you want to take a turn on the seat of the chair, don't feel, I won't be offended. Competition's good and having a fresh new person in the hot seat is, is good.
I'm also willing to continue.
Go ahead, John.
What are the logistics of doing that? Sort of turn it into you or turn it into Sue or?
Oh, as far as wanting to be a position, an officer?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, you wouldn't want to discuss things, you know, with more than, you know, with a quorum of commissioners before the meeting. But as far as being nominating a person, whether it's yourself or someone else, you can just do it right at the meeting. We'll say like, hey, who wants to, are there nominations for chair? And then we do all those and nominations for vice chair and nominations for clerk. If there's only one for each, then we can just say, all right, let's just do it as a slate, up or down. But if there's multiple options for each position or one position, we'll take that individually. But it can happen right at the meeting. And then if there's multiple people, you know, we can, everyone can say a pitch or, you know, some persuasive monologue and then we do the vote. It's pretty flexible. There hasn't been, there hasn't been too much competition while I've been on the commission and before I was chair. That's the way it's worked out. Any other announcements? Nope? Okay. Let's move on to this public proposal we received. Someone, another person, another or entity used that form that we have on our webpage. I think that's the third, maybe fourth time, so.
That was so cool to see.
Yeah, seems like it's, you know. It was worthwhile and I like the format that they, you know, that they answer the proposal through and it helps clarify it. But staff did kind of an analysis on it and gave their recommendations. So I'll just pass it over to them.
Sure. So the request that we received was to consider amending the town plan to make a recommendation to expand our village centers, village center designation. That is a state designation program. And when you're in the village center or in the downtown designation, you are eligible for state tax credits for historic preservation code improvements. Melrose Terrace, what remains of Melrose Terrace, I think there's 30 units or so and a couple of buildings. The Housing Trust, Housing Authority, front of our housing partnerships, is looking to redevelop those sites. They previously were in the special flood hazard area. They received, a portion of the property received a lot of damage from tropical storm Irene. They removed a bunch of the buildings that were in the floodway and they did a floodplain restoration project. And actually now they are out of the special flood hazard area. They are within the 500-year flood where there's a 2% chance of flooding any, in a given year, or 0.2. Yeah, 0.2. Anyway, so the requests, you know, they're trying to redevelop and they're looking at all funding sources. And so that's why they were requesting that we expand the village center. Another thing that had changed, the village center designation had previously been renewed in 2018, I think. And at that time, the zoning was residential neighborhood and now it is village center. So there's, there's good reason to think about trying to get that into a village center designation. However, staff is recommending at this time that we don't reopen the town plan. It's kind of a lengthy process. If we were to do that, it's going to take several months. We'd have to insert a new map. We'd have to have public hearings. We would need to, the Select Board would have to have two public hearings and then we would also have to get it approved by the Wyndham Regional Commission, which they have their own process for it. So that's probably going to take us till the end of the year to get something like that done. And then only to turn around and two months later, go through an adoption process with the new town plan that we're working on. I have talked to the person that submitted this request and he totally understands that. He said, you know, he just really wanted to get it on the radar of the Planning Commission. And so he, yeah, he understood why staff was coming at it with a recommendation not to do it at this time. Basically, the time and the expense are kind of our reasons. In addition, and we'll, we'll get to this a little bit later in the meeting, but the state is actually changing their designation process. And even if we were to do all of that, I'm not sure, part of that has to happen at the regional plan level too. And so I don't really know where the state is in their process of redoing the designation process. As I was reviewing for the Act 181 conversation, it was like, oh yeah, they're doing it this way now. So I didn't have a chance to check in with them, but anyway. That's the gist of it.
Okay. Questions?
Staff recommendation.
Yeah.
And just also, the person that proposed this knew that we were meeting tonight. He was invited to come. Didn't feel strongly that I needed to.
Okay. Just although you said we're going to get to it later this, this evening with the Act 181 overview you're going to give, I don't want to lose the question. Do you think that because of Act 21's changes to the regional plan and maybe the implications to town plans, that, that, well, we have our deadline for the town plan and we have to meet it, but do you think it's going to be, it's going to be smooth? Or do you think soon after we finish this town plan, like the full requirements of 181 and the implications won't be fully, like will we be able to account for those in this update of the town plan?
Yes.
Okay, great.
To, I think they're not supposed to go, yeah.
Okay, great. Yeah, I don't want to spend much, I just wanted yes or no because off topic to this agenda and I didn't want to forget. Good. Okay, Lindsay?
So do we need a motion to deal with this proposal or what?
I think that would be good, you know? We got a, we got a formal proposal and to us, so yeah, we could have, yeah, we can make a motion and then any discussion and then a vote so we know what we're discussing.
So would it be reasonable to say I move that we approve the recommendation of planning staff and hold off on an amendment until the town plan added and extended to the town plan?
I think so.
Wait a second.
Can we, can we say though that we'll consider adding it to the town plan? Just so that way, instead of just saying it's going to be in there absolutely now, you know, it'll give us time in the future to consider what it looks like. Great. I just have a question from my end before I'm ready to vote, which is that how come, how come we haven't tried to include all of our village center zoning district as to the application for the state's village center designation area? There's Hayes Court, there's Glen Park and there's Melrose Terrace.
So the designations program has changed over the years. When it first was set up, it really was about the concentration of commercial and civic uses and they weren't looking to extend it into the residential areas.
Even though it's like walkable?
Yeah. So that, those are in the neighborhood development area. And this Melrose Terrace is also in our neighborhood development area. It's just the tax credits. There was one year that they were available, available as a pilot project in those areas. Now it's just the village center in the downtown. So yeah, it's, I think that's going to change a little bit with Act 181, but for now.
Is there any downside or penalty to applying, being too bold in one's application and being shut down? It's just wasted effort? Or not wasted, but like?
So I believe it's moving away from the towns making the application to making it consistent with the regional plan.
Okay.
So I'll get to that later in the meeting, but the Regional Commission is going to be working on regional land use maps that are going to identify the designations and the neighborhood areas. So I think that's where we're going to want to, we want to lay the basis for it in our town plan, but we really want to make sure that the regional plans reflect our feedback.
Okay. I'm all set. Any other questions or comments from commissioners? Okay. If we all remember the motion, if you don't yell or flail your arms, but all those in favor, please raise your hand. That's the four of us. Okay, no one left to vote. Let's move on to the town plan 2026. We have three, three subparts to this. One is checking in, like status update about the community conversations and then staff, actually, this was a surprise to me when I chatted with Sue a week or two ago, maybe I missed something, but delighted to see some drafts of the housing and transportation chapters. Let's go with the community conversations first. Do you want to take this, John, to start us off or Sue is there?
I think Sue's actually keeper of the records. I wanted to jump in though before we got too detailed on the chapters to discuss because there's some framing that I want to make sure we do, but go ahead and discuss the conversations.
Right, okay. We'll make sure to get to you right after this.
Yeah, so we put this on the agenda as kind of check in. I know that some of you have done community conversations, Tom and Gary and Lindsay and I know others have some set up. So we were just looking for a little feedback. Is it working or how's it going? So if you want to jump in.
Yeah. I think Lindsay and I should go first to say, you know, what we've done and how it's gone. Do you, Lindsay, you want to draw straws? Who goes first? I never actually did that as a kid. We always did rock, paper, scissors. You're not unmuting, so I'm taking that as that I will go first, unless you'd like to. No, okay. I, there was a representative town meeting, District 8, like informal discussion before the special RTM. It was like mid-May or something that Gary, who's the District 8 Chair organized. And so I just thought, oh, maybe just right after that, I'll piggyback off of that meeting and announce to everyone whoever wants to stay can have one of these community conversations. So it wasn't really pre-announced or pre-planned. I, I do have a plan. Anyway, I won't get ahead of myself, but only four people stayed out of like the 16 who showed up for the previous meeting. People probably had places to go. And Gary stayed. Him and I probably could have coordinated a little bit better. I think maybe he thought that we were going to tag team that presentation, but I just thought, well, he just led that previous meeting and I'm just here to lead this one. But anyway, it, so I think if you're with another person, it's important to kind of spell out the roles that you're having and how you're dividing up the tasks if at all or the redundancy. But four people stayed and they were very engaged. I went through the kind of primers that Sue provided about like, you know, we're just here to listen and get your input. We're not here to advocate for anything. We have these nine questions that we, you know, staff and commissioners worked on together that are about aspects that we want to get answers to. We also have a survey and I pointed them towards that and I said, we're going to have workshops later, in-person workshops, one or more. And I think we just had like half an hour of time. And so that left, after a bit of introduction, so left something like three minutes per question. And that was really rushed, even with just four people. So in two days, John and I are going to, I have a friend in Sunrise Rotary and we're going to have about 30 minutes there during their hour-long meeting. And I think about 25 or 30 people show up to that. So we're going to have to always keep in the front of our mind to be really efficient if we want to get to all nine questions. I was, there was like, well, we were pretty much out of time and there was three questions left, you know, seven, eight and nine. So then we went a bit over to get those captured a bit. But yeah, I don't know. I just, you know, I, I was, it was, it was fast-paced. The four people who were participating were very much engaged and seemed to be authentically, you know, sharing their thoughts about the questions. And I was writing everything down that was relevant. I was restating things where I could and I don't know, it went really well. These people were certainly, you know, the usual suspects. They're RTM members and participate in town government and public meetings and things. So in some ways that was kind of a trial run in an easy crowd. I don't know, Sue, do you have any other questions for me about how it went or any other commissioners? John?
Just a couple of questions. So I'm hopeful that we can get some quotes out of these meetings.
Yeah.
Did you, logistically, did you use anything like tape-record the meeting or ask somebody to maybe re, you know, redo a quote so that we could capture it? What would you suggest?
Yeah. No and no, unfortunately, is my answers to those questions. Because the time was so limited and I was also the, this is a situation where delegating and teaming up better with Gary, you know, would have helped out a second person because then, you know, that second person could, the notes I wrote, I mean, I'm going to deliver these notes to Sue and she's going to probably be asking me some questions later about like, what does that say? What does that mean? Because I was writing really rapidly and in shorthand somewhat. So no, there's no, there's really no quotes. I could maybe reconstruct some.
The question I have is, the other thing I think would be valuable to get out of this is, again, from my personal opinion, we want to provide some credibility to the town plan process in that we've asked a number of diverse groups, right, for their feedback. Now, what that means by demonstrating diverse groups, I'm not sure. I mean, is it just good enough to say, well, we talked to an RTM or we talked to a Rotary or I'm going to the senior center in mid-June? Or should we try and get a more detailed set of graphics? Sorry, demographics?
Yeah. Well, that's not just a question for me, I guess, anymore about my experience, but I'll answer. I mean, we had some other ideas like youth groups or a classroom, the Root Social Justice Center. I spoke with someone at Tri-Park the other day. I forget the person's name, but they said they used to be on the board, but they're not anymore, but they'll go to the next board meeting or ask them. And I said, you know, if you guys, and they seemed, she seemed to say that they would be interested. So I said, just reach out to anyone at the Planning Department of Town about that.
Was that Kate Curtis by any chance?
No, I don't remember. But anyone else want to weigh in on John's question? About what sort of metric or how do we, how do we know we've done a good job getting a diverse sample set?
Okay, well, not a problem. We'll, we'll wing it and I'm going to do a couple. So at least I'll have one to go through with, with you, Tom, and before we hit the second one.
Okay. Any other questions about my experience or, or advice based on what you heard for, you know, for me to improve for the next one? Yeah, Sue?
Question. So at three minutes per question, you could, were you able to ask questions, clarifying questions or try to?
I did sometimes, yeah. People seem, we're pretty clear about things, but, but yeah, maybe, maybe several times throughout these nine questions in total, I did say, oh, so you brought this up? What do you mean by that? Or you started talking about retail and then you moved to like tourism or something like, that seems, at least that's not a good example, but it's like, were those connected or were those separate points? Yeah. And sometimes I repeated the question. Some of them are actually kind of a little long or they have like three parts to them. So I tried to restate it and show how there are multiple parts to it.
And would you prefer less than nine questions? I mean, if you had to, based on your conversations, were, are there ones that you feel like you could cut out? Or should we just be planning for a little bit more time?
Oh, yes.
Where you can. I mean, I understand like with a Rotary or?
Right. Yeah, I would absolutely advocate for more than 30 minutes. I would recommend that if it's a group of more than four engaged opinionated people.
How about if we give the group of people the nine questions and say, listen, we're not going to realistically have time to address these nine questions fully. Which ones are the priority ones that you would like to answer? Or which would you like to discuss first, maybe?
Oh, wow. Yeah. Yeah, my friend at Rotary asked to get the questions in advance and at first I said yes, but then I took that back because I said, listen, we're not, you know, although we want all this input from people, you know, the best place maybe for that due to capacity of interpreting notes and everything is maybe the survey because we did the AI summary of that. But you know, if we get a ton of answers to questions from 25 people and they're, I'll have paragraphs, you know?
Yeah, we don't really want the people writing them out.
Yeah, yeah, Sue has.
No, no, definitely not. It might, it might provide, maybe we can try with the older, with the senior center.
Yeah. However, though.
Choice.
But John, to bring it full circle to what you asked, I think actually I, maybe I should have done that, but with what you just said, which is like, hey, can you figure out? Because I think they meet weekly, so we won't have the chance for this Rotary meeting in two days for them to have reviewed the questions. I mean, maybe they do things on their own time and have communication between meetings. I don't know, but yeah, I think that, I think that be, to prioritize the questions based off what the group as a whole is most interested in, I think, I think that'd be worthwhile if there's limited time.
Nor do we have to necessarily get a consensus from the group. There doesn't have to be sort of a Rotary opinion, right? We're just really talking to X number of people from a similar demographic in some sense and it's perfectly fine if they have diverse opinions.
Yeah.
I think, you know, part of what's helpful too, particularly with a group like the Rotary is getting it on their radar. Because if there is something in particular that they're interested in, we could go back and speak on that if they wanted.
Right.
You know, when we did the, we just, we just did something very similar for, for the Community Action Agency. And we actually said, if you would like us to contact you to get more input, here is our, here's our contact information. I would be willing to do that if, if, you know, we get some people coming out of these meetings and say, listen, I just didn't have enough time to tell you everything I wanted to tell you.
Yeah, yeah, I do too. Okay. Lindsay, do you want to talk about how yours went?
Sure. So I just picked a few of the questions to do because I was kind of co-opting, a co-opting meeting with a group. And so I didn't want to monopolize their time. So I just chose the ones that I thought were sort of diverse and might be of interest to folks. I also didn't get quotes. I just took bullet pointed notes. I put them in the town office mailbox, so hopefully they'll make their way to you, Sue, with your name on them. And I think the thing that surprised me the most was how unwilling people were to see themselves on experts of the town that they live in. That was really surprising to me. I don't imagine that you'll run into that at the Rotary and perhaps not with a group of seniors, but I think it's something to keep in mind with people to really encourage them that they are the experts on the place that they live in. They kept telling me, well, I don't know. I mean, but then they had ideas. So they just needed to be sort of prodded along. Well, of course, you know, you go downtown, you know, like, I mean, I'm sort of flip, but you know, I sort of pushed them along to realize that they had things to say. And I don't think, I liked having all of the questions to choose from. I wouldn't want fewer questions because I think depending on the group, you're going to, some questions are going to be more relevant to them or interesting, especially if you know the group. Like, you know, I kind of know these people in the stitching group, so I hazard a guess at which questions they thought would be interesting to them. Yeah.
Lindsay, I just wanted to check on one word you used in terms of, of saying expert. Was it that they didn't feel like they were experts or that it was difficult to get necessarily an opinion out of them?
No, it was like they felt like they weren't qualified to provide an opinion on the question. And so I needed to sort of prompt them to be like, well, you know, you're alive, you experienced climate change, you can proper your opinion on that, you know? I think.
Even like on downtown, where people go downtown, they were like, no, I'm really not qualified to give you an opinion on what downtown needs?
Well, that was what they said initially. But then they did give answers, but they needed to be encouraged to give answers. I think that people don't serve on a planning commission and they think that that's something elite that they're not qualified to give information on. And so I had to encourage them that they, this isn't about being qualified. This is about giving your opinions and thoughts on the town, so.
Interesting.
Yeah. Yeah, Bonnie?
So I had a similar situation as Lindsay where I was at church and we were doing some mailing work and I was speaking to a couple of women. The women that I spoke to weren't from Brattleboro. So they didn't feel like they could say anything about Brattleboro. I said, but you come here to shop, you go to church here, you know, you're here. So anyway, I, I tried to talk them into that and they decided they didn't want to. But I do have, I have, I have a church, a couple of people from church I am going to interview that I haven't been able to set up. And as far as feeling like we have kind of feedback from all the different types of folks, I, I think that since we're different and we have a lot of different friends and I think we'll be fine. And, and I just thought of another group because I went over to Family First today. So I, I think there are so many different, you know, groups in town. We can certainly. We can certainly spread ourselves around to these groups.
Well, if anybody think, if anybody comes up with a group and wants a body to go over there, I don't know. I'm not part of a ton of groups within the town, but I'm happy to go make a cold, you know, cold call, if you will, to these groups and talk to them. I've done a lot of that, so I'm not really, I'm not shy about it.
Oh, great. Thanks, John.
Yeah, I think it's interesting. I mean, and I'm passing a judgment here, which may be unfair, but, you know, the usual suspects always have a very strong opinion. But it was interesting to hear what Lindsay said about people that might not be the usual suspects, having to draw them out a bit about, you know, their opinions, if you will. So maybe we need to work, maybe we need to work hard at doing that.
Yeah.
I'm hesitant to commit myself to trying to do more of these because I have so many other things going on, but I will throw out the suggestion that the new space on Elliott Street, 69A, my neighbor is Katie Bockler, who's helping to run that space, and that might be a good opportunity to talk to a diverse group of people because it's an art space, but it's also sort of a drop-in center during the daytime. And so I could pass that, her email on to somebody to see if they might be willing to have someone stop by. I mean, you could just stop by.
Bye. I've actually thought about it too, Lindsay.
They're open, nine to five, I think, Monday through Friday, so you could just stop by and see who's there. And I think, you know, especially if, you know, you brought some coffee or donuts, you'd probably be even more welcome. But that would be my suggestion. I do have a potluck this weekend with the Southern Vermont Vegan Group, and I will try and bring another set of questions with me to see if I can co-opt some of their time as well.
Great. Yeah, I mean, I think from my perspective, ideally, if, you know, if we do this over a few or low several months, and each month, maybe each of us has somewhat of a plan or a solid plan to like do one in the interim, that might be great. So like Lindsay brought up that potluck group, and I heard, well, John and I are gonna do Rotary in a couple of days, and then John and Bonnie and Sue are gonna go to Red Clover Commons at some point, a couple of weeks. And maybe we can give ideas to, you know, John and Dan aren't here, but we can provide a list to them of the different groups.
I, you know.
Even if, even if they're too busy to do it, or there's issues, at least we can.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think we can keep this going for a little bit. I think, you know, I don't know that we'd wanna go too long, but as well, as long as we're writing chapters, I mean, we'll get into that next, why you're not seeing any goals, policies, or actions at this point. But, but, but yeah, I mean, I'd like to be able to do some more, but I'm pretty time strapped as well. I have a relationship with some people at Families First too, Bonnie. And I did a walking tour with a bunch of, a bunch of their self advocates and some staff, and that was really interesting. I'm sure, you know, if you were interested, Bonnie, maybe we can set up some time to go over and talk with them.
I saw a little head nod there.
Because it, you know, it does bring a different perspective, for sure, to projects.
Yeah, I would enjoy that.
Yeah. For those that don't know, Families First serves people with developmental facilities, so.
So then, so you would be capturing the client's input and staff as well?
It depends on their ability, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Right. Great. Oh, yeah, and then I think after the Rotary one in two days, then I'll try to go door to door, or send postcards or something around, or, you know, to my neighbors, and try that approach, try a neighborhood one, maybe in this month of June. Okay, anything else with community conversations? We'll check in again about it next month, maybe, and the other two commissioners will be here? No? Okay. John, moving on to the drafts of the Housing and Transportation Chapters. You wanna give some context, what you said?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, Sue's gonna handle this. Sue and Stephen have been doing the writing. But I did want to start by saying that because of some timing issues, we were going to give you content now. This is not the final format. So certainly, and again, Sue, please jump in, but certainly we want your input on format, but understand, we understand that this is not the final format. So it's mostly to review content, make sure we have the content, and obviously get whatever other input you have on it. Is that fair?
Yeah, it is fair. I mean, I think.
Depending on how, how these go tonight, we'll have one for you in July that would kind of be in the, what we're hoping it would look like. Maybe with some of the graphics or the maps missing, but those placeholders in there. I think for the purposes of our conversation tonight, we're not looking for grammatical or typographical edits. We're looking for kind of the content. Is this, you know, is it the right amount of content? Does it, does it capture where we want this to go? Yeah, so that's kind of, I think. Yeah, I, let me, let me start. I wanted to put, let me flip to. Let me shut my screen. We'll start with the housing chapter. And I just wanted to give you a little bit of reminder.
Okay, a little bit of a reminder of what we're being asked. Basically, what the state's goals are for housing, and then what we're being asked to address in the town plan. So the state housing goal, which we could adopt as our goal as well, but to ensure the availability of safe and affordable housing for all Vermonters. So housing should be encouraged to meet the needs of a diversity of social and income groups, particularly for citizens of low and moderate income, consistent with housing targets, which we don't have yet. So that's always been in there. Wyndham Regional Commission has never given us housing targets, but they'll be coming next time around. There's a goal for new and rehabilitated housing to be safe, sanitary, located conveniently to employment and commercial, and coordinated with the provision of necessary public facilities and utilities. And a goal that sites for multifamily and manufactured housing shall be readily available in locations similar to those generally used for single-family dwellings. And also that accessory dwelling units be provided for. That's basically the gist of it. So that's the state housing goal. And then in terms of what we need to address is the plan is required to include a recommended program for addressing low and moderate income persons' housing needs as identified by the Regional Planning Commission pursuant to blah. And it should account for permitted accessory dwelling units. So basically, it's kind of housing for all. John?
Does, is the unsheltered included in the housing plan? Or is that ancillary and included somewhere else? In other words, is one of our goals providing shelter for the unhoused?
That is a good question, and it's, the current town plan does address, does address services that we have for unsheltered people. Or it doesn't really have a plan for them, more just acknowledging the services that Groundworks and the shelters that we do have, not just Groundworks, but other shelters as well, Women's Freedom Center.
So the state doesn't have a goal either?
Not in the planning goals.
Not stated this way.
Yeah, not stated this way. Yeah, I mean, I think we had talked about it a little bit in the office. We don't have the point in time count data yet. I mean, we do have some data from what the state has for people in motel rooms and in the kind of coordinated entry system down here. That's not in the draft, but it's something that if that was missing, we could, we could do some work on that.
Yeah, and I just want to be really clear. I'm not advocating anything. I'm just learning.
Lindsay?
I am advocating, and I think it would be great if we had something in our town plan that at least gave some sort of acknowledgement. I mean, this is a really big issue in our town and our state, and it seems, it seems like something that we would likely get called out on by people for not having in there at this particular juncture. Maybe not 10 years ago, but I think now we would. So if it's possible, I would suggest that we try to consider that.
So Sue, you don't have to go back to it, but on that previous slide with the four state goals, do, I mean, do we have to have those in addition to if we want to have more?
We don't have to have these. We could restate them in different ways. Our town plan does have to kind of address the state housing goal. So I think you'll see in the draft, you know, we do talk about, well, we don't have a number from the Wyndham Regional Commission. We do have a number that is for, is from our housing action plan. We do talk about, you know, housing cost. We talk about the number of units. We, yeah, I mean, there's some statements that basically, you know, we're advocating for more housing of all types, not just focusing on senior housing or something like that. Steve can speak to it.
I asked that question because, I mean, if, if you actually, you know, look at all this, when it says safe and affordable housing for all, and then all the subparts, I mean, in some ways, it's, you know, it's pretty expansive and comprehensive, and that would be a whole heck of a town plan chapter, just focusing, you know, on these things. So it's not, you know, obviously, the things should be tailored to each town, but if we have to have these, they're already, you know, from my first scan of it right now, you know, really expansive and all encompassing, aren't they? I mean, housing for all, that's literally every subset. That's the frail, that's the elderly, that's special needs, that's old, that's young, that's married, that's homeless, et cetera, et cetera. That's every group.
Yeah.
Okay. It's just up to us to what degree we spell out and name all of these groups and the details that we elaborate on.
Sue, it's been a while since I've looked at the Berlin Town Plan, but didn't they align? They aligned to the state goals deliberately, correct? Or they cross-referenced them in their activities? I'm trying to remember.
They do. So, yeah, so I mean, it's not uncommon. I don't know if they verbatim use the state's goals. I don't, I don't, they may have, because they don't, they have, in the chapters, they have objective, objectives, policies and actions, I think. So they may have kept the state goals upfront and then did objective policies and actions, or did they just do objectives and actions?
They have three tiers. One of them was objectives. I think it was goals, objectives, and actions. I think, I think we renamed it policies because that's how we had broken them down.
Yeah, yeah. They don't, you don't have to use the state's goals, but you can't be out of alignment with them. Let's put it that way. Like, we, in our current town plan, we have a policy on housing quality. We have one on housing affordability, one on housing availability, and I think one on fair housing. I think, I think we have four goals currently.
Okay, so some town plans may not hit every single point of this, but as long as it's, there's nothing like opposing, or it's doing a fair enough job, then they'll, they'll pass it.
Yeah, and, and sometimes you can make an argument. So for C, sites for multifamily and manufactured should be readily available and similar to those for a single-family dwelling. While you might not have an express policy in the housing chapter, it might actually be in the land use chapter where, you know, you're allowing for a mix of housing everywhere, and that's how that gets covered.
Okay.
That's a little, can find it in different places.
Okay. It'd be interesting to think about all the state's requirements and think if Brattleboro is in opposition to any of them. Maybe if we are, we shouldn't state it too loudly.
Well, or point out, point out why, maybe, you know, I don't know.
Say again?
I said, or maybe point out why. I agree with Sue. From what I read of all the documentation, we don't actually have to list the state housing goals. We do have, we do have to obey, if you will, the second slide that Sue presented, which is have the information in there. Yeah.
Okay. All right, let's, let's move on then.
I mean, maybe it would help to get a straw poll of how much folks had time to dig into this. Do they feel like they're already familiar enough with what's in here, or should we do a, you know, 60-second drive-by of it?
So are we done with the PowerPoint for now?
Yeah, yeah, I'll take that off.
Well, I, yeah, how do commissioners feel? I personally read through it all and took, took some notes and compared it.
You're talking about the materials that were contained in the packet we got today, so there's like some, some charts and things like that. No, I don't need anyone to go over that.
Bonnie, John?
I, I agree actually with Lindsay, probably, probably for different reasons, but I agree with her.
Okay. Well, then Steph asked for several aspects to be answered, those questions in the email, and Sue just ran through them at the beginning, this agenda item, so. Yeah, commissioners, do you wanna just give input? As you, in accordance with that, or as you see fit?
Is it possible to put the questions in the chat again so that we can reference them? The things you were interested in hearing from us? I don't remember them all.
I don't remember what my email said.
Okay, well, I can get there.
It's okay, I can find it. Let's see, so I don't want grammatical or typographical, you can send this to me offline. So I think it's like, are we missing any key aspects of the topic?
Yeah, let me tell you, I have them written here.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Any missing topics? Is the amount of info sufficient?
I'll, I'll say that I don't want to get into.
Thank you, Lindsay.
Oh, she put it on. Great. John?
I will say, I don't want to get into formatting for the reasons we talked about, but I found the content to be much more effective for me than the 2013 town plan. I liked it, was the bottom line. It was much more numbers oriented. It started with a very clear, this is the current state, so. That part of it, I thought, was excellent.
Just a question, and I'm not advocating one way or the other, but it seems like almost all of it was, is rewritten instead of taking our, our current plan and like copying parts, editing parts. Why, why do you guys choose to do that instead of just changing what we currently have? Because a lot of it's still applicable, right?
So, all right, a couple of things there, and I'll let Steve speak to one of his concerns about our current chapter, but.
And I'm not talking about the graphics or data, either, the actual text.
Yeah, okay, so data has changed. We feel like the current text is a lot of like documentation of what exists. It's not really talking about what are our needs now. It was like a, there's just a lot of information in there, trying to get it out to the public, but that's not really what we need to do in a town plan.
Okay, making this more shorter and more effective.
Definitely shorter, more effective, and I think that, and I'll throw it out there, and then Steve can speak to it. Felt like the chapter was very much about neighborhood preservation and not allowing new housing development, so the tone of it changes a bit.
I mean, in some ways, we had talked about this in the, in the department. We definitely have at least a few statements in the existing town plan chapter that are pretty much directly contrary to what we have done with the zoning, which I know Brian thinks that he's found a way to thread the needle on that so that it all is, and it's not like we tried to, you know, pull it fast one running on. But I'm mostly referring to the 2013. But, uh, I'm mostly referring to the twenty twenty one, I think it was, uh, emergency response to the COVID, um, obviously health emergency that, um, the density restrictions were preventing adequate housing that could allow people to adequately, uh, socially distance and whatnot. So that was a golden opportunity to do away with the, um, density restrictions that we did have at least in the developed districts. And that specifically, I think, is, it adds with a little bit of what we currently have written as well as, I want to say, we do specifically say that we want to have floor area ratio requirements. Um, and I, I want to say there's also some fairly specific things on the, you know, bulk massing size, et cetera. So the current one that we have is very much focused on, mostly preserving what exists in our developed neighborhoods with a small amount of room for, in theory, a small amount of room for iterative growth within a pretty narrow range. So to not center on that again was pretty critical to us, although I will say that we did reference and work with the text of the existing chapter while writing this, as well as, um, the, uh, twenty twenty one housing action plan. So those were definitely being used to write this. So we're not just totally.
Yeah, no, I noticed that, but, I mean, in some cases, well, I don't, I don't need to belabor it.
Yeah, we just, we didn't need it to be an encyclopedia.
Right.
If you remember those.
Yeah, yeah, and I remember us talking months ago about how, you know, what do we want, like a town plan that covers everything and all info, or do we want it something that's more approachable or accessible and people don't get lost in the two hundred and fifty pages?
Even in what we've given you, I think there's a couple areas where we could still trim down on text. Uh, there's one part, the housing units by type and housing tenure, I think we could make into a, a chart like we see in these, but we wanted to make sure that there was something to get to you on the deadline. So, we could trim down the text and replace that with more graphics if that's something that.
Well, ju- just still on this point, I was gonna advocate for the, um, for the intro paragraphs that each chapter has, the housing and the, you know, right at the beginning.
In the current town plan?
Yeah, in the current ones, because, because I, I read them and I'm like, wow, this is nice. I mean, it really, it really just in one paragraph gives you a good snapshot and, and like, and, and where the town wants the head. But if, you know, but I also see the, the benefit of eliminating fluff and just getting, getting right to the point.
Steve cut it in and I asked him to take it out.
Yeah, I mean, so I could go either way on that, but I.
In the first place, so it is funny, uh, as soon as the advocate for removing it, we're like, no, that's a succinct, good paragraph.
Exactly, right.
So, yeah, that could always go back down. It's, it's not a whole time length.
Yeah, yeah, it is, I mean, it is nice to, to, people can pick their level of depth that they want to get to. You know, there's a chapter titles and then like a sentence snapshot, paragraph snapshot, and then just a whole darn chapter if you want to get into it. Lindsay?
Well, that was actually going to be, one of the things I was going to ask was whether there was going to be like an executive summary or something at the beginning of each chapter, because as I was reading through, um, and maybe this sort of falls under the style of writing or tone, I don't know, was there were some really salient, interesting, poignant facts in there that don't really jump out unless you read everything. Like, to me, it's like really key for people to know that we are half renters here in Brattleboro. Like, that's one that I would like bold. And there were some others in there that I sort of felt the same about that might benefit from being put into some sort of key points of this section or summary at the beginning for people who aren't gonna read the whole, whole thing. There's some pretty startling information in there, I think, for a lot of people. I mean, I know, I was startled when I moved to Brattleboro and found out that, that housing distribution. I mean, that's, that's kind of crazy, fifty fifty. So, but there are other things in there as well, I would say the same about.
Imagine that we could spare the length of having a, you know, one page key point summary at the beginning of every chapter.
And then also as when you, when we get into formatting later, that will highlight points where this draft doesn't.
Could be a sidebar that, with the key points.
Yeah.
I think it's also our intention to have a short executive summary at the beginning of the one, possibly, as well as some intro information if not. So maybe there's an opportunity to, to do that there too.
John?
If you don't end up with a section like that, then I would recommend the possibility of bolding certain things.
Yeah.
Call them out.
Um, as, as a, as a strategic plan wonk, if you will, purist, um, I do think the section that was future needs should be aligned with our goals. And I, I realize we don't have goals at this point, but for the future, whatever the future needs section says, in my opinion, should definitely be aligned with our goals and our goals should be smart goals, if you will. You know, with, with all that stands for, measurable and all the rest. I never remember what smart stands for, but it's easily Googled. So.
So.
Any comment?
Yeah, I, I've given a lot of thought about, and, and it came up in the last plan about having smart goals. So the, the planning manual basically has goals, it's, gives you, you know, they do a hierarchy of goals, objectives, policies, actions, right? The goal is kind of the vision where you're going to, the objectives are the more measurable. Like, uh, we want to have a mode shift of, you know, instead of two percent riding bikes, we want three percent riding bikes. My challenge with that is we don't always have good measurement. And so I, you know, I get the actionable, the, the measurable, all the, all the parts of smart, but it's, yeah, it's, it's a little bit difficult because we don't have those systems set up right now.
Let me give you an example that brought it to mind. Uh, in the future goals section, there was a, a line that said, Brattleboro, and I'm gonna paraphrase it because I don't remember exactly, Brattleboro needs five hundred blah, blah, blah units, right?
Yeah.
Now, in my opinion, Brattleboro needs five hundred blah, blah, blah units because we have a certain goal. And the goal perhaps is that we are, want to have housing for everyone at a population of twelve thousand five hundred. Right? If, if for some bizarre reason we should grow to fifteen thousand, then that five hundred units presumably is no longer valid. The goal really is, is that we have a housing, we have a housing for all of, for our entire population and our entire population, we presume, because it's been steady for fifty years, is going to remain steady. And that is, um, you know, that's five hundred units as it stands today. Now, that's long-winded and it doesn't all have to be included, but my point is, is that the goal isn't to really get five hundred units, the goal is to have housing for, for our entire population.
And the action is five hundred units more, maybe?
And the, the specific action today, given the current, current state, is five hundred units, and that's to me where it all ties in.
I think, so I think that the goal, I, I don't know, I can't, I can't write goals and objectives, but to me, the goal would be provide housing to meet the needs of the current population plus those who might want to move here. Not, not to increase population to twenty thousand, but I, I could pull that, something like that from the housing action plan, how they determine the need. The objective would be create five hundred forty new units across town. And then the action, you know, the action, you know, are gonna be all the steps we're gonna take to get there.
Yeah, yeah, and the terminology, you know, the terminology is always different between different styles of strategic planning, but that's the basic hierarchy.
The hierarchy.
Yeah. I, I think to me, you know, it makes more sense to think of it that way, because then you can, once you change the, you know, once you, you can see the connection with why we're doing this, and then you can also, if you change the top level of the hierarchy, you can easily float it down through the rest of it, right? If we don't need that many units, we're not gonna build that many units.
I want to power through quickly some, some points I have on my notes. And as much as I'd love to discuss them all, I don't think we should. But if need be for any of them, please let me know, um, or speak up. But for the missing topics, um, request, um, I brought up the info or executive summary paragraph. Um, people before brought, or a commissioner or two brought up, um, like housing resources or homelessness being addressed, and I didn't see that addressed at all. I mean, if that's, if that and then this other topic of workforce housing, people talk about that a lot. Um, if those are like a bit more, uh, fluff and not just the actual like cold hard facts, so to speak, then and we want a more slimmed down town plan, then that's fine, but those are missing topics that I noticed. And then maybe this is getting a bit, um, more granular than topics and into, you know, the actual, um, text. But I'll just say briefly that, um, I think something that would tie that data together of the household size decreasing, the population staying the same and people aging, it's just, in our current plan, it says there's a mismatch between what's available and what is needed. And it's just one sentence and it can be inferred in this data, but I just didn't see that mentioned in this, in this draft. And then I just want to move on to the question, um, about graphics to add. I think, um, a map of the housing types might be nice to see. Maybe not, I mean, uh, skipping ahead to the transportation chapter, I think a map of the roads and the transportation network would be great. But as far as a map of housing, I, I think it'd be nice to see, but I, you know, I'm willing to relinquish that.
We're probably about to ask.
Because when you, when you say the percentages, like, I mean, it at least shows spatial, maybe that's more for the land use chapter, actually.
Do you need more like the number of units in each residential building by like housing types? Or are you looking more for like here the owner occupied units, here the community units?
I mean, if you could have all of that on one, like, like shades.
Aware of where the data would pretty much live for those things, so I think we could make it happen.
If, if you think about it and you think that'd be a valuable visual for people to get a sense of their town from a bird's eye view and where and what type the housing is, but maybe that's more of the land use, land use map. As far as continuing with graphics to add, um, I think showing, uh, you know, some of the photos that we have in our current plan, you know, it's a little too much, maybe, but, um, but it also does make it, you know, feel more approachable and
That's definitely gonna be included in the four hundred.
Okay, great. Yeah, so like a, a, a characteristic photo of each type of housing, maybe? Um, I thought a graphic maybe that you provided that I didn't get much value from or takes up too much space for just the one thing I think it shows is the, the single family home property transfer values over time from twenty nineteen to, to last year and how they've increased by fifty percent. You know, I, I don't think that needs to take up a whole, you know, half page, it's just in five years, they've steadily increased much faster than inflation. Or, you know, unless, unless it's saying more than I'm getting from it, I mean, there's three different lines, but it's just saying that they've rapidly increased and one can, you know, if one knows things about other stuff, it's faster than the rate of income and
Yeah, that's certainly what I was meaning to say with that graph. I, I myself would not think that it would be as impactful in text to just say that, um, as compared to looking at it in, um, in a graph format, but I know that we did have conversation in the department about trying to tie it more explicitly to uh, affordability, the way that, uh, the other renter related ones were. It's, it's something that, I, I have a few ideas on how I might be able to do that. I think that the easiest one would be that we've got state level data on the, um, typical tax returns for, uh, all of the years that are mentioned here. So we could get the sense of the median income each year without having to use the much less frequent and much more volatile data from the, uh, American Community Survey. Uh, so we would basically be having a census, uh, so to speak, and rather than a survey. Uh, so we could rely on that data without using, uh, margins of error. And we could just take a ratio of these three segments, the housing market, which I guess it would be a good, um, straw poll as well, just to get a sense of, do people get what I mean by the three, the median, the Q one and the Q three? And does that seem useful and helpful? Because it, it is, I think it's, it's interesting to see that there's a divergence, it would seem, uh, in different segments of our housing market, where maybe a lot of what's breaking the average price up is from the, the more high end stuff. Uh, but it all is.
And the more high end is Q three or?
Uh, yes. Or, uh, yes, it, it ought to be, uh, the third quartile, yeah, because the fourth quartile would be the, the maximum. So that's, yeah, that's our top twenty five percent of housing values are in there. It's the median of the top half, so to speak.
Yeah. Uh, you know, and I guess in the actual town plan, each of these graphs aren't gonna, and, you know, are kind of take up a whole two thirds of the page, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah, I just, so, so what we're showing is two things essentially, the, the, the first quart, quartile or, you know, the twenty fifth percent, seventy seven, seventy fifth percent, but anyway, yeah, I mean, that's, if you can pack some more info into it or something, if we're gonna keep it, yeah. Lindsay, what do you think?
Um, actually, I need to step away for two minutes and I know that we only just have a quorum, so I didn't know if that was acceptable.
Are you leaving your camera on or camera off, but on, connected?
I can do whatever is required of me. I'm not leaving the meeting, I just need to step away for a moment.
Yeah, if you could just stay in the meeting, but you can shut your camera down or whatever.
Okay.
That'd be great. We're not making any decisions.
I have thoughts about the, um, the last question that Steph asked about general reaction to content and direction of future needs. It seemed to me that the, um, the drafts just seemed to solely focus on the, the number of housing needing, needing more number, or needing more housing, needing a greater number. But I thought, you know, our, our current town plan, which doesn't seem like it's now irrelevant, um, advocated for improving housing quality, um, locating and designing housing for more efficiency, um, and it spells that out in some ways. Uh, meet the needs of all. And then maybe particularly put some emphasis on the, the decreasing household sizes and how, you know, like I said earlier, what we, we shouldn't just necessarily provide all types of housing and all numbers, even though it will help, but target it more towards towards the specific household sizes and demographics that are increasingly common. And then, and then there's a thought too, you know, continuing with the, um, to some degree with the, the goal of compact growth and like where resources, um, where town infrastructure is and not spreading resources too thin. So like, not equally encouraging or maybe even discouraging housing in like the more remote areas of town. So that way it doesn't, um, extend town resources unsustainably. So, so just some ideas to, to add more to just the draft, just saying more housing, period.
So I think, I would say that some of that is addressed under housing needs, so.
Oh, really?
Talk about, yeah, so, um, I should, next time I'll put numbers on these, but, um, it talks about, um, that infill alone isn't gonna do it, and then we should be, um, looking at underdeveloped flat cleared land served by town utilities in the northern half of downtown and along Putney Road, north of the Veterans Bridge. So that gets to some location, it may not speak to it the way that the previous town plan did.
Yeah, I mean, it also specifically calls out needing to be open to considering some reasonable amount of potential greenfield development, uh, near the existing services, which, utility, the services, which is of course something that, uh, bears discussion, but it's in there for now. And I, I definitely, I at least felt like we focused quite a bit on the big story being that the, the household size has been plummeting. And I don't think I put it in there, like, we could put it in there if we really want a zinger in there, that, as far as I'm aware, we're like the ninety ninth percentile of smallest household sizes.
Hmm, in the country?
Yeah, as far as, um, now, I'm forgetting if it was by.
I mean, it's certainly addressed earlier in the draft chapter, but I just, I think since it's such a. I mean, it's certainly addressed earlier in the draft chapter, but I just, I think since it's such a clear and evident trends, maybe an actual, you know, a housing need or priority should be tailored or
Yeah.
or focus on that, that that clear demographic issue.
These are helpful comments, and I think that we can
Yeah.
work on the housing need somewhat a bit more to address quality.
Yeah, we don't need to
Efficiency.
Figure it out right now.
It is one of those things. Do we put efficiency in here? Do we put it in the energy like, but I think housing efficiency, yeah, make sure we put something in.
Yeah, I mean, my devil's advocate take would be that there is a trade off between that and affordability to
Sure.
And so wrestling with that would probably be productive in terms of what balance we strike and also how much of it caught to go in the energy, the land use, what have you, could be in the housing chapter. But I know we we had a universal design shout out in the existing town plan chapter, which certainly we we could bring that into this one. I'm not sure that we really have any levers to pull on making that actually happen. Which, you know, maybe there's a discussion to how much of it is just
aspirational.
aspirational versus how much do we want this to be wrapped in? What can we actually do without having to like necessarily ask anyone, so to speak?
Yeah. Yeah, that would be interesting. Commissioners of their input about this chap, this draft chapter? John?
I have a general comment, which is that I I thought the original 2013 was a bit full of platitudes and sort of ideal hopeful comments. And in general, I personally would prefer to have this version more oriented towards providing us a a realistic and reasonable direction to to establish our activities, tactics and activities. Excuse me. Yes. And and I'm sorry, Tom, I'm not meaning to pick on you, but the thing that really brought to mind was when you said housing for all. Is that is that really what we're going to pursue, housing for all? If so, then what are we going to do to make that happen? Or are we just putting that in there because it sounds wonderful and and of course, that's our our preferred ideal state? Does that make sense? I I prefer to stick to, hey, this is going to be, this is going to be something that provides us direction as a town to where to spend our money, to where to do our planning, to where to deploy our resources, not we've taken everything that we really wish we could have and we put it in this you know, document, which in my opinion, the previous document had a lot of.
Yeah. I wasn't necessarily, so that when I said housing for all, it's there's
No, it's okay. Again, I'm not really picking on you. I'm just saying that there's there's a lot of statements in the old document kind of like that, you know?
Yeah, no, no, I I agree. And I'm all for personally having a more trimmed down and just focus on like effectiveness town plan. It's just my read of the the draft, future housing needs was just kind of largely just one like it like it's all one kind of just one need, more housing, which is really important, but I viewed, I liked how the existing town plan and it doesn't need to have these these three or four things that are here in the existing one, but I just liked to diversify. Because there's there's more, in my opinion, more goals to housing than just more.
Not a good point.
Yeah. And 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 they're touched on throughout that draft chapter, but not so much in my read in the actual needs sub sub part. It's just a draft at this point and we'll see it again. Any anything else commissioners on this draft chapter? Bonnie, do you have any thoughts? If not, we'll move on.
Yeah, I think we should grab up a big piece of property and build a whole bunch of tiny houses. That's what I think. But, um, no, we can move on. Thank you.
All right.
Okay, the transportation chapter. We're going to go back to the PowerPoint for a slide or two or just get right into it?
Yeah, thank you. Okay, um, so with the transportation chapter, we need to have a map of, actually, it's existing and prospective transportation and circulation facilities showing proposed highways and streets by type and character of improvement and where pertinent parking facilities, transit routes, terminals, bike paths, trails, scenic roads, airports, blah, 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 and other similar facilities or uses with indications of priority or need. So we'll be working on a map with the industrial commission. That the map is not in the chapter that you saw, obviously.
Does our existing town plan have that? No.
It does have a map.
Oh, in in the transportation chapter?
In the transportation chapter, it's it's got a couple of maps. There is a future transportation map, I think, in order to remember exactly where it's with with planned.
Must be in the land use chapter, though.
No, it's in the transportation. You don't see a map? No map? What do you have or maps in the transportation?
There's just this one?
Okay.
Did you see that one?
I did see it. That's it?
That's it. And here's the end. Now I'm on arts and culture.
Okay, well.
Maybe they added that as a requirement in the meeting here.
Yeah, maybe. I think so, but okay. Well, we still had an approved town plan. We do talk about desire improvements, so. Anyway, so the goal is to provide safe, convenient, economic and energy efficient transportation systems with respect to the integrity of the natural environment, including public transit and paths for pedestrians and bicyclers. And then they also want us to be aware of highways, air rail and other means of transportation mutually supportive, balanced and integrated. So that's the state's goal around transportation. Yeah. So this chapter is arranged probably like you're going to see most of the other ones. The housing one is always a kind of a difficult one to wrangle because there's so much data. This is divided into existing conditions. And of course, there's all those different pieces of our transportation system, highways, rail, local roads. I addressed parking and the parking in this chapter is dealing with like commuter lots. So pretty much the long term parking at the transportation center and the park and ride, which is elsewhere in town. And then it talks a lot about the bicycle and pedestrian network, passenger rail freight, which is both rail and trucking. So that's big in the community. And then the priority needs, which there are a lot. I tried to be specific about some kind of long term transportation projects that have been going on, whether they're a state project and they're really important to get done, or whether there are some town hotspots that we've been dealing with for a long time. I was trying to, you know, we all want sidewalks, but our budget's not supporting either our roads or the sidewalks being maintained in good condition. We have a lot of sidewalks in the neighborhoods that were built in probably in the 1970s with federal funding and they're really expensive to upkeep, so and they're in poor condition. And what you pay to rehab sidewalks these days doesn't get you very far for compared to what the town is putting towards it in the budget. So there's kind of a strong statement about, you know, look, we need to figure out the best way to do this. And in some cases, it might be replacing a sidewalk with a multi use path. In some cases, it might be, we're going to rip up sidewalks on very low volume streets. We don't identify them here, but it's kind of this plan is taking a different perspective of, we've got all this infrastructure that we can't necessarily maintain, so we might need to look at different ways of doing it.
Phase them out in certain places.
And that's not something we've talked with the public about. I know public works and I have been talking about it, but so that's something that's new in this plan and that kind of concept. And then yeah, it talks a little bit about about funding. And then the other thing has to do with transit. There's in under the future needs. You know, we are part of the mover. They have consistently said to the town that the amount of contribution that the town is making is going to need to increase. And if it doesn't, there's probably going to be cuts in service. So the plan kind of makes this strong statement about the importance of public transit.
Okay.
Comments?
Any commissioner on Zoom want to go first? Thoughts, comments? John? Oh, unmute yourself.
Sorry about that. So I I don't know if you have the data or not, but I'm just specifying the difference I thought between this and the housing chapter was you have the data on the infrastructure that exists, i.e. how many miles of roads, for example. We don't necessarily have usage data in the in the chapter itself. I know that in previous meetings, Stephen, for example, has quoted us numbers on what our bicycle factor is or something like that. So so the data, some of the data at least in some fashion exists, and it would be nice to see that data for current state as well, because I think it would give context for the next point that I have, which is our priorities and our goals. So for example, you know, with an aging population, which our demographics show, maybe our goal should be to provide more public transportation because old people tend not to have cars slash drive them all the rest, right? Certainly, they don't bike much, as much, excuse me. And and that's how, again, back to my other point about how the goals tie into the strategies, tie into the tactics, tie into our external factors. I think we could start to put a coherent goal together. Now, again, you know, you might disagree with my points and that's perfectly fine. But the process would be that we would look at the demographic changes going on, the, you know, the the current state, which is obviously that we don't have money, for example, for sidewalks. And then we would start to draw some goals, because I noticed once again in the transportation chapter, we go to priorities, but I can't necessarily see the connection between the priorities and what goal, what goals they're trying to accomplish. I mean, some are obvious, some are obvious. It would be best to have a very clear connection.
When I hear you say some of those things, I I agree this chapter is missing the data and it points to that previous suggestion of either having a executive summary, some sort of summary paragraph or or something that yeah, if you stick that up front and then, yeah.
At least, you know, or I mean, certainly we can, I I forget whether mover provides transportation data, but we could certainly look at mover data, for example, how many people they take back and forth.
Yeah, no, I definitely have ridership data. And then we definitely have like vehicular traffic counts in places. There there's, yeah, I hear what you're saying on the data. We can add more.
A chat message came up, but I missed it. I just see
Oh, sure. Okay, in the chat, I'd love to know more about people whose rail trips originate in Brattleboro. Seems like that could be a valuable valuable information for the town.
That was another one of those things that just to me should be like emboldened. That's I'm I had no idea that we were producing that many rail trips. And where we stand along the Vermont or line as far as, you know, second and things like that's that's really kind of incredible. I mean, when I was recently asking about how do we promote ourselves as a place for people in New York who want to live here, but maybe are artists or and want to be able to go to the city, like, I would be really interested if we could ever get any sort of survey done of of people coming in and out and what they're doing because I I had no idea.
Yeah, it's not clear whether those are commuters or visitors or, you know, but I realize we don't have the data, but that would be very interesting. I agree with Lindsay.
Not broken down, but it could be, I mean, there's, you know, what, two trips a day? So one north, one south, we could do some
Yeah, there's only so many, there's only so many times to survey and you don't need to worry about missing people, so.
Yeah.
It would be hard to imagine that many people are able to use it as a work commute at the moment because of the time that it comes in.
Yeah, I'm guessing that it's not being used by people between like here and Greenfield and things like that. But I think, you know, are there people who are living here and traveling, you know, consistently, for example, to New York City? Because they are engaged in something there but are choosing to live here.
I have heard of that, so I think
Or is it, yeah, or is it, you know, are there predominantly tourists? I just think that would be really interesting to know.
It's a great point and it would be really fascinating to know.
And I don't remember everything that's in this chapter, which I know is shocking, but it occurred to me while I was saying this about the railroad, is there anything in here about the possibility or desire to have a connection between the mover and FRTA in Franklin County?
There is not.
Okay.
And Keen too, although Keen doesn't have much of a bus system.
No, Keen does not have much of a bus system.
Yeah.
It seems like just such a missing link that it is so hard to travel between Brattleboro and Greenfield and places south where there is a really robust public transportation system and a lot of employment and education opportunities.
Yeah, I've thought that too.
I think that someone could start a business probably and be successful shuttling people.
Yeah, there, I know that there has been some conversations about even the lack of public transit from the train, particularly when it's arriving at 5:30 at night, like there's, there's not a good way. I mean, so that gets to kind of vaguely unmet needs, but maybe we shouldn't be so vague about the unmet need. We could call out the desired services and let the mover figure out.
To put on my member of the public hat for a second, I extremely strongly agree with Lindsay's point. And that's been like my number one wishlist item in public transit since moving here. It seems like the access to extra regional economies and jobs, that that could open up for people that live in Brattleboro or vice versa would be humongous. And especially with, I think you can get on the train in Greenfield at quarter to six and quarter eight in the morning.
They have more options, yeah.
Yeah, and they have a couple in the afternoon too. So you'd open up a dramatic amount of access to getting to New York City and other parts of the Northeast corridor with not having to necessarily wait for the train to come up to us more often.
There's a bus connection.
There are so many connections between, like similarities between this part of Wyndham County and Franklin County, that it seems like it just makes a lot of sense. I mean, in many ways, we're closer to them and their major places than we are to a lot of places here in Vermont. They also have a very robust regional council of governments in Franklin County that works on a lot of this stuff, so.
There is, I think, a plan from Massachusetts DOT to also extend East West Rail through Greenfield, but I think it's pretty much a done deal. So that also would be of interest to Brattleboro people, I would assume.
Yeah, I read that. That's true.
And maybe the Vermonter will reconnect to Montreal.
They are talking about that too.
Yeah, I see I see some recent updates about it, at least a year ago.
Does it make sense to add another category of transportation in addition to the ones that you mentioned, which is ride share?
I was thinking that too. I mean, it's
What ride share?
It's something that people want, but then I, at least on Facebook comments, then I see people saying, oh, I gave it a try, but it wasn't worthwhile.
Yeah, I think there's one guy, Bobby, or something
Right.
who does ride share.
But it's a need.
As a category, as a category, it's important as in in terms of actually doing anything, I don't think there's anything for it.
We can't sanction hitchhiking like maybe we could in the 60s.
So, John, can you?
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, just one clarifying question. John, are you, are you suggesting that under the existing, that ride share comes and goes, it's not, you know, the state of it is not, or are you thinking of it as a need?
I'm I'm actually less interested in advocating anything as I am from a process standpoint. I think ride share is another type of transportation that in other places is frequently used as an alternative. frequently used as an alternative to, you know, taxis and all the rest, and we should probably just mention as a category. And if we say nothing more than we don't have any, then that's what we say, but.
It it has emerged since the last town plan, and so it could meet a need, but has yet to seemingly do so. That'd be my hot take on it.
Bonnie, I think.
Oh, Bonnie.
Sorry about that.
Well, we do have a yellow cab now. Have you noticed?
Oh.
Yeah, he's riding around, and it says yellow cab on the side of this little car.
He's legit, Bonnie.
Wish him luck. A few responses I have to the missing topics question is, well, once again, like an intro paragraph, executive summary. John mentioned the ride share. I wonder if it's worth just saying, I don't know how much of a topic this is, or just one sentence, but like, address the town's park and ride up at exit three and whether that's been a success or or not so much in the intervening years.
I do talk about it.
Oh, sorry, I missed it.
In there.
Okay. And then I think, I mean, people often say how the transportation center slash the garage has, you know, is potentially such a great asset and has been used a lot, but then not much for a while, but it's underutilized. So potentially it could be a goal to like, hey, double down. I know the substation is going to go in and such. But to double down on making that highly utilized.
So.
As parking.
Yeah, I intended under municipal facilities and utilities to address the parking system there, and I'll flag that to I here I was just mentioning it as a place where you could park if you were going out of town on Amtrak, like you get a long term permit, so more in uter function, just like the town's parking ride.
I forgot about the other chapter would be more relevant.
Yeah, I mean, it's
Yeah, it's hard to know which one sometimes.
It's part of the utility, so.
And then for the prompt about the input for the style of writing or tone, I found and don't read into this at first at all. I found this one, I think different authors wrote these chapters. Yeah, and I found each each one to be good for kind of different reasons. My impression of this one, the transportation one, is that it's like more accessible and readable and like some shorter sentences, less dense info, and it's like an easier read for people. Let's say it's like a grade, you know, whatever level. But the other one is like more you know, kind of relatively packs in the info and, you know, puts a lot in there and gets gets a lot more like data and info across. So I don't know which one's better. It's just a matter of, you know, maybe a fusion of the two.
I find it interesting. I was wondering, because I do think we write differently. And they do sound different, and I was wondering if anybody was going to pick up on it, and I think it's something that we're going to have to watch as we're writing chapters. We're going to have to smooth it out, so.
I wonder what Chat G P T would do if we told it to make a Frankenstein.
Well, a format, though, I mean, a common format and and an outline of sorts, it says every chapter will have, you know, these elements to it would certainly help with that. It would certainly minimize the diversity, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, uniform.
I think I find the housing chapter to just be a little different than the rest of the chapters, to be honest. It like, I guess you could put it under existing conditions and future needs, but I don't know, most of them don't don't flow that way, so. And there is a lot more data that is.
So but going to data and the prompt about graphics to add, I think maybe, well, with data from the parking study from several years ago, would that be more relevant under the municipal services or or here? I mean, we talk about parking.
Municipal services.
Okay.
We'll talk about the utility there.
Right, okay, because, okay. Because one point, you know, that's salient, I guess, from that is that, you know, people think we have no parking and it's we don't have enough, but then when the study was done in like twenty twenty or twenty nineteen, whenever, it showed that almost always we have more than enough. But what was it? So we talked about the map that the that the state's requiring, and that covers everything I thought of. Photos, those will be in there of like a model good bike rack. Or or like, you know, what's safe, you know, good approachable pedestrian road crossing looks like.
Yeah, yeah. I think we had talked in the office about some traffic calming issue.
Photos.
You know, different, yeah, different techniques.
We, yeah, we caught ourselves talking about it with jargon and then thinking, okay, if we are going to talk about a neck down or a bump out or what have you, speed table, whatever it is, we should probably show a nice small drawing of that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, it's it can be both in a photo that's informative and gives some humanity, or, you know, it can actually maybe be a spot that already exists in Brattleboro. And then the last thing I'd have to say for graphics to add is that I have, I can't recall the road or the length of time or anything or where I found this, but I have seen some vehicle usage trend data over the course of like decades, like here in Vermont, like on Route thirty or Route five or ninety one. And I always figured like, oh, we're becoming more and more car culture over time, and the population hasn't decreased. So the numbers are going to either stay level or, I thought, just keep increasing. But some of this data was like, oh, there was higher car usage on some of our arterial roads in like the seventies or the eighties, and it's actually decreased. So I think that's informative and some info can be drawn, some conclusions can be drawn from that. One, it's helpful for people to be like, oh, just like that parking data where there's the perception of, oh, we don't have enough, we need more. So it could kind of be for roads and driving. It's like, you know, if people have like a negative mindset and they're just like, we need more lanes because this traffic annoys me, it's like, well, actually, look, it's less than it used to be, and these roads have been sufficient when it was more. So, you know, conclusions or can be drawn from from that sort of data trends over time.
Anecdotally, I've done a bit of the dive into Maple Street point intersection count data from B Trans when there was conversation about the capacity that that road is currently built to versus what it sees as usage with regards to the housing that may or may not have there. And it definitely bears out what you're talking about, and I think we could find a way to boil that down into something that shows something poignant about perception versus reality of where we're at, the share wise.
Commissioners, anything else with the transportation chapter?
If no one's got anything, there was one thing that came to mind for me, if that's all right. Where we talk about reducing sidewalks and transitioning into, you know, multi-use paths, who nerfs, whatever it is. You know, the devil's advocate in me wants to say, you know, are we going to be reducing? Are we going to take out any car roads and just leave the walking and biking paths, or are we only ever focusing on those modes for when the rubber meets the road, no pun intended, that we have to remove something? But in a more productive way, I wonder if we would consider looking at deep paving some of our rural roads. I know that's a conversation that I think the state has actually advocated for in some sense, is to reduce paved rural roads and replace them with more dirt roads. I'm not actually sure how much that ultimately saves in cost, but it would seem to be more sustainable long term in some ways and also potentially cost savings. But that along with maybe a goal of retreat in terms of throwing out some of our really low volume rural roads that maybe ought to be something that the local property owners maintain themselves.
Yeah, that I've never seen that done by a town. I don't know how you'd go about it. You can speak to public words about those ideas if there's if there's interest. I mean, I wouldn't say that a lot of our rural roads are paved.
Well, Main Street is like basically bare at this point. It feels that way when you drive down it. How about we take that one?
There is a big paving project coming.
I think the point you make about whether it's always this and or whether we sometimes say, actually, no, we're going to prioritize this other thing is an interesting question for people to consider. I mean, people who ride bikes and walk pay taxes. And they deserve access to places just the way people who drive single occupancy vehicles might think that they deserve access to places as well. And, you know, the the stretch along Putney Road, which lacks, you know, a lot of safety for a lot of people, while not obviously being under our control, but it's the one I can think of at this moment, is a good example of a place where we've clearly prioritized one type of transportation over any other type of transportation, despite the fact that we know that many, many people in our town do not drive and do not have cars. So I think that that's a really, I don't know, I think that's a valid question.
Yeah, it seemed to me like maybe one of those this is water kind of situations of it's so taken for granted that we should be deliberately thinking about should we actually discuss this directly and question our presumptions about it in the same way that we were trying to be a bit provocative with the housing chapter in terms of we can't just say we want housing for everyone and on a theoretical level, but in our actual neighborhoods, we want to keep them almost exactly the same because you can't have those two things at once. So it seems like that's kind of a similar conversation when it comes to what we do with our transportation.
We're five minutes behind. Do we have more that needs to be said about this draft transportation center or chapter, or should we just move on to the Act one eighty one? I don't see any burning comments about the transportation chapter, so. Okay, any closing thoughts, staff, or just?
No, this is really helpful. These are the first chapters that we wrote. I mean, it's good to get a sense of, you know, what your yeah, your reaction to it and what we need to do to fix these up, but also what we need to be thinking about as we move forward. So I think this was really.
Should we email some, any things we didn't say or more specific to you?
Definitely, definitely email. And I think the next time you'll see at least one of these chapters, it'll be in, you know, the more format and working.
And you can even point out typos to us in the email.
Okay. Yeah. I'll put a plug to thank staff for that. We're lucky to have them because I'm aware, I think, that a bunch of rural towns, you know, that have volunteer planning commissions but don't have staff, planning department staff, unless they get some help from the their regional commission, but I don't think the regional commission is actually just writing. Anyway.
No, they don't. They would apply for a grant.
Yes. Oh, so sometimes they hire consultants, but I am aware that some volunteer planning commissions do actually write the town plan themselves, and they have to, you know, it has to be like a lengthy, comprehensive document. So that's, we have it kind of easy in some ways, you know, we can be more high level.
I think Sue and Stephen have done a wonderful job.
Yeah, so.
And I really appreciate the fact I don't have to write it.
Right, exactly. So it's great to have, great to have them. Okay, moving on to the Act one eighty one overview that staff presented.
So, um, sorry, should I just jump in?
Yeah, please.
Sorry. So this, these slides that I gave you actually came from the Woodbury Regional Commission. And this is kind of a first part of it. They're still working on, well, they're working on another part, but I thought I'd flip through these. They're things to keep in mind as we're doing the town plan, but even more so, it's probably for what the planning commission is going to have to be paying attention to in the regional plan, because it kind of, it goes regional plan, town plan, and then, you know, some of the extra incentives or Act two fifty delegation that we could go for. They're all related. So I will try to be quick with these.
Sue, as you go through this, I skimmed through and read through most of it. It was mainly talking about the regional plan. But the the description on the agenda talked about new requirements for municipal, like our town plan. So whenever there's there's that sort of nexus, can you just highlight it or, you know, bring it up?
Yeah, and I'm
To make that clear.
I'm still kind of learning what some municipal requirements are, but but, yeah, sorry, I think I
overstated it or.
But I overstated it in the agenda, so I apologize. So.
Act one eighty one was enacted in June twenty twenty four, and it makes changes to the planning and regulatory framework in Vermont. It's basically creating a statewide standard for the land use designations. It is also looking at the state designation programs and kind of tweaking them a little bit. And then if all things line up and we and the town of Brattleboro was to go for local approval, we would, we could get Act two fifty delegation, and then we'd also have extra exemptions in certain areas of town from Act two fifty is the state land use permitting. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the regional planning processes and the changes that Act one eighty one makes to that because it affects Brattleboro. And then, you know, what are some of those requirements and the new regional plan maps that they're going to have to create? So the regional planning commission process, they're going to have to incorporate meaningful citizen participation in it. I think within the next couple of months, in the fall, they're probably going to reach out to the town, probably the planning commission to get our feedback on the maps that they'll be putting together. Their mapping is going to need to consider potential environmental benefits and then burdens on different populations. And they have some requirements in their plans where they now have to address equity, climate resilience, which the town already does have to do. Mitigation, which we do, and adaptation as well. So there'll be a chapter on kind of resiliency.
Is, are those two topics? Equity is one, and then the climate resilience mitigation and adaptation is the second?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I just skip over this one. Yeah, we'll skip over this because that's more regional plan stuff. So here's the big thing. They are going to be creating ten regional land use categories that are going to be basically every regional planning commission is going to use these ten land use categories throughout the states. It gets at something that has been called for since the eighties to have a statewide land use map. And so these are the ten the ten different land use categories. So.
Could you ever see benefit to the that being percolated down to the municipalities as well, like required? Or or us choosing to do so?
Require them. It could make sense for us to use them on our future land use map just for consistency's sake. It's a good question, Tom. So there's the downtown center or village center. You know, we have those traditional and historic businesses and civic centers, so that would be downtown Brattleboro and the village center, West Brattleboro Village Center. The planned growth area for those of you who are around for our neighborhood development area. It's, these are the areas that are walking distances to either a downtown center or a village center. Under the state program, it was a half mile from the downtown, a quarter mile from the village. With some exceptions, because you need to have infrastructure that allows for people to walk. Sometimes it can be larger than that half mile or, you know, further distance. Sometimes it's going to be shorter, depending on the infrastructure. The village area. I think this might be a typo because it's kind of up here. Transition or infill areas are commercial linear strip development adjacent to planned growth growth village area. So in Brattleboro, that would be like the further out you go on Route nine. You know, kind of out by Cumberland Farms, you know, further west from the village would be a transition or an infill area. Potentially.
Would that be Putney as well?
I think so. Yeah. Resource-based recreation area. So this is more for like the western part of the county, Mount Snow. Any of the ski mountains would be that. Enterprise area or industrial and commercial parks. So that'd be our like industrial zoning districts. Hamlets, we don't have in Brattleboro, but those are just, you know, really small villages. Think Demerstyn Center. Think Demerstyn Center, um, maybe, you know, parts of Guilford might have little hamlets. So, um, and then there's some more rural, um, type, low-density residential areas, significant blocks of farmland or forestry and critical natural resource areas are the other three.
So we don't really have those last two, except maybe the watershed or the water.
The watershed would, could be rural conservation. So this is the future land use map of, um, Wyndham Regional right now. I can't, I can zoom in on Brattleboro. I don't know if you can see that very well. It's going to change, but you'll see. So, uh, the red, sorry, I zoomed in and now I can't see the. So they currently have like Putney Road as rural commercial. So that would kind of be that transitional infill area that it'll become. Again, West Brattleboro out there. They do have, yeah, I. They basically used our zoning to come up with this land use map, but this is gonna be changing under the new, um, regime. I think my, probably regime's not the right word, under the new scheme. My concern, so, well, let's go ahead for Act 250. Let's talk about the Act 250 reforms and I'm sorry, I'm kind of fumbling this presentation. Another part of the Act 181 is this Act 250 reform. So tier one A communities can actually become exempt from Act 250 permitting. They're gonna be looking at our town plan, at our zoning and subdivision bylaws, our infrastructure capacity, administrative capacity, and, you know, the regional plan as well. And so we, as Brattle, we Brattleboro could apply for tier one A status. There's a lot of reasons why we're interested in doing this. You know, I would say primarily there's a lot of duplication of regulatory, um, review. There can be, the more regulatory review, the more uncertainty it can be for development, particularly housing development. Um, and there's a cost and there's delay. So, you know, all those things, you know, can be difficult. We do have the capacity, the staff capacity, we have the regulatory capacity. So we do wanna prefer, uh, we, we do wanna have, go after tier one A. As it's written right now, we could only have that tier one A in the downtown, in the village center and the neighborhood development area. Putney Road would not be eligible for tier one A. And so my interest is making sure that our town plan indicates that we want Putney Road to be an area, you know, to grow. It's a planned growth area. I think you already saw it in the housing chapter and we wanna make sure that we work with the regional planning commission and that they hear from the town that we believe Putney Road should be, um, you know, considered one of those, uh, areas for growth, planned growth area. The reason it's not currently is because the state's designation programs kind of are funky and there were a couple of barriers to getting it in, um, particularly the fact that the West River kind of cut it off from the downtown area. So that's important, both in our town plan, making sure we're clear that it's, it's an area for growth and then working with the regional commission to make sure that it can be so we can get into one A. John?
Sue, could we parking lot that for a, a future meeting, the discussion of why we would want, why we would consider that and what the costs would be involved to fulfill the necessary, you know, infrastructure requirements to make it that way?
Yeah, we can. And right now the land use, um, review board is actually working on the criteria to get delegation. So I might not have all those answers, but yes.
Right.
Tier one B, I, we don't have to go through it because we are eligible to be a one A community and that's what we're, we're interested in. One B does, does give some exemptions, um, for Act 250. It tends to be for towns that, you know, don't have as much, um, administrative capacity as, as Brattleboro does.
And one B can't apply to Putney Road? It's, that's not how it works? Okay.
Yeah, I could not, so. Um, as, as far as I understand right now, it could not.
One A or one B can it both?
Tier two is a designation where there's basically your, it's, it's status quo. So you're still subject to Act 250 jurisdiction. Tier three is, um, is actually additional. It's got some new, um, scenarios where Act 250 could apply. So these are the really critical natural resource areas. In, in Brattleboro, you know, it could be the watershed lands that would fall under it, but they haven't really come up with their criteria as to what is going to have additional, um, additional review from the Act 250 that doesn't exist now. So that's kind of the newer. We can skip over this for now, since what happens when you use somebody else's, um, things. So again, downtown and village center, that would automatically be eligible for tier one A. Planned growth areas are eligible for tier one A or one B. Yeah, the village areas we, we don't have because we have the village center. Finally, the other part of the Act 181 is housing targets. So when the Wyndham Regional Commission comes around in the fall or, or at whatever time, they're also gonna be talking with us and it'll probably be the planning commission about their allocations for the number of housing units that we should be, um, working towards. So they have to allocate, um, a, you know, each town that are gonna be allocated to housing targets. So they'll be talking with us about that. So it could be higher than our 500. Basically, the state needs 24 to, 24 to 30,000 housing units in like the next five years. And so they want all the regional planning commissions to allocate them. In Wyndham County, there are so few communities that have water and sewer. So, um, I know the Wyndham Regional Commission wants to be, uh, realistic. But that, that'll be an interesting piece of when they come to us with their outreach to find out what it is. John?
Another request for a parking lot item. Could we have a primer of sorts from you and Stephen before the regional commission, commission comes? So we have some context for, um, their presentation? I, I can see all sorts of things they're gonna present that I have no clue about and I'd, I'd like to know about them before they come, so I could ask intelligent questions.
Yep. Yep. So I don't know when they're gonna come yet, but yes.
Oh, that's fine.
So, um, yeah. They're saying, oh, so one thing about the Wyndham Regional Commission, you might hear in July, they are adopting a new regional plan. It does not have this, the new future land use scheme. They are aware that immediately after they adopted, they were so far along in the process that they just continued, but that's, they're gonna start this fall, um, and have to, uh, you know, do that one act, 181. They're gonna work on the housing allocations. They're gonna draft the future land use and they're gonna hold meetings, uh, with us. So, so something to look forward to. It'll be interesting.
As long as we don't have to do that for our town plan.
No, we do not. We do not, but we wanna make sure that our town plan is, you know, gives them good directions.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Yeah.
Sue, I feel like in the past you might've mentioned that there has been discussion about, um, housing units and how Brattleboro takes on a great burden of housing, the population in this area, um, and other towns needing to contribute to that. We're at the end of the meeting now and I'm like totally like, I've had a long day. But I would love if in the future, maybe it was just included as a memo, not necessarily something we need to talk about in a meeting, but I would be really interested in hearing more about those discussions or what's happening at the state level with that for towns in situations like Brattleboro is in. I was recently told, um, through one of my jobs that, um, some states, people are advocating for situations similar to the situation in New Jersey, which is where housing units get allocated by the judges up until now and now a state agency for affordable housing units and that it's like required by law. So I'd just be interested to know what's happening here with that because we do so much here. Really, we're so great. Everybody needs to help though.
Yeah, it'd be interesting to see if like a, a regional planning commission like says, this rural area along Route 30, this village center, we want you to become a new downtown or a new planned growth area, even though the town is like, we wanna stay the way we are.
I do not think they will go that far.
Oh, okay.
And, and honestly, I mean, just quick because we're after eight, but you know, we have a lack of county government and there are so few, you know, you need the infrastructure. And so, you know, nobody can make another town install water and sewer. And so it does, in a very, in this state where there's hometowns and there's the more rural towns, there's, you know, certain towns.
Are the place to go for certain things.
I mean, not that it's a bad thing, but we have a lot of capital A affordable housing in this town. And they, you know, coming, you know, there's not as much taxes collected or, you know.
Yeah, we would probably already meet any hypothetical builder's remedy quota that the state might essentially introduce like Massachusetts and New Jersey have, for example. But maybe we can get the state to just allocate us all 30,000 units and just pay us. Uh, be a win-win.
All right. Any, um, any other things that need to be said about this agenda item, staff commissioners? Okay, public comment period. There's no one hiding on the Zoom that I can't see in the role, is there?
No.
Okay, no one in person? So we've completed all our business. I declare the meeting adjourned.
Thanks, everybody.